It's ready.
All right. Call to order for the city council regular meeting of Tuesday, January 19, 2021 at 6:19 PM. City Clerk, will you take your role?
Yeah, Brooklyn. Mayor Turco.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hasselbreit.
Here.
Councilmember Bates. Councilmember Dobie.
Here.
Councilmember Napolda.
Here.
Okay, please join me for the pledge of allegiance. Hopefully, Wendy, we have a flag somewhere.
Was not able to get the flag back up.
Uh-oh, all right. Okay. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance. Of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, bear your hands with me, please. Our gracious heavenly Father, we come before you tonight just to give us the wisdom and the decision-making guidance to do what's right for the city. We just pray for all of our first responders out there, both at a local level and a national level. We're in such uncertain times and so much anger and just uncertainty. We just pray for level heads and just a unification that we can move forward as a country, as a state, and as a city. Let me ask all this in your blessed name. Amen.
Next, we have presentations. The first presentation is regarding the upcoming 46th Annual Americana Awards. The presentation will be by Howard Kummerman, Executive Director, Cypress College Foundation. Welcome, Mr. Kummerman.
Thank you so much. It's a pleasure to be here, Mr. Mayor, and to be able to share about the Cypress College Foundation Americana Awards. We, like you and all of our residents, have had to go virtual with all of our events. We were fortunate last year, for those of you that joined us, to be in person at the end of February, right before the pandemic. And this year, we will be virtual on Saturday, February 27, for a virtual livestream event. And it will start at 6:00 PM. It will be a one-hour event. And I'll tell you some of the exciting things that we have in store in just a moment. But first, what I really, oh, I think I lost my, there we go, full screen. First, I wanted to thank the City of Los Alamos. You've been steadfast in supporting Cypress College students, the honorees from your city, and our Americana Awards for many, many years. This is our 46th annual event. You have 44 Citizens of the Year that have crossed our stage over those years, and we very much appreciate your participation. Right now, there are over 300 students from Los Alamos attending Cypress College. And even though the pandemic has continued and we are not able to hold classes in person, our students are faring very well virtually. We're providing quite a bit of support to them. Whatever they need, whether it's computers or Wi-Fi, we're there to help our students to make sure that they're still continuing their education. We give away nearly $400,000 in scholarships to students, and much of that goes to Los Alamos students who are so close to our borders. And so the funds from this event and events like this help us to give money back to our students to attend college. There we go. The, this year is our reunion year for the Americana Awards. And so instead of having new honorees from each of our cities, we are going to be honoring all of our former Americana Citizens of the Year and men and women of the year. And you can see, we sent out invitations already. Many of you probably received them. This is a partial list. It goes down quite a long way of the Los Alamos Citizens of the Year. So you saw in the invitation that at 5:30, we have a pre-reception, and we're inviting all of our former Citizens of the Year to join us on that Zoom. Although our livestream will not be Zoom, this is going to be a professional livestream event that will have quite a bit of surprises for everyone. We're going to continue to have a silent auction that will be available a week before the event, and then an online live auction. And we're going to have celebration packages delivered to all of the attendees for the event. It's going to include a full meal, dessert, a bottle of wine, our Americana program, a commemorative 65th anniversary Disneyland item, and some other surprises to honor our honorees and to highlight our students. So we're going to continue to do this in Americana style. Even though we're not going to be able to be live at the Disneyland Hotel and on their great stage, it's going to be a fabulous, professional production event with both live and pre-recorded videos. We continue to have a donation from Yamaha. And the, this year, we have a pair of electric bicycles from Yamaha that have been donated that are part of our opportunity drawing, so we hope you participate in that. We hope that you participate again this year with sponsorship, encouraging your residents to participate, and encouraging your honorees to come back and join us virtually for this year for our event. So I want to thank you for having me here today to give you a little update on what we're doing, and let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you, sir. Anyone on the council or anyone on staff, anyone have any questions? I'll just say that I've been at the Americana Awards the last three years, I believe it is. It's a great event. Obviously, this year is a little bit different with the pandemic, but it's a great event for a wonderful cause, you know, the students of Cypress College. And, you know, we honor, every year, we honor Citizen of the Year. This year, we'll be honoring our past Citizens of the Year. And I see one of them is on the call. I don't mean to call on her, but former mayor, councilmember, and Los Alamos City Citizen of the Year Marilyn Poe is on. Marilyn, if you wanted to say anything, feel free to raise your hand, but you don't feel, need to feel obligated to say anything. Again, it's a wonderful event. If anyone has any questions about it, feel free to contact Howard, or Marilyn, or me, or the event. I do have to warn you, though, they always have great raffle prizes, and you end up doing more than you had anticipated in terms of trying to win some of those prizes, so.
And Maryland City Committee are doing a great job and have continued to support us for many, many years, so thank you to Marilyn for joining us.
Marilyn, I see you unmuted yourself. Did you want to say something?
Oh, thank you. Just want to ask everyone to support the event. You know, it is different this year, and, but we still want to see a good turnout. Thank you for allowing me to come on.
Thank you, Marilyn. Thank you, Howard.
Thank you.
And our next presentation will be regarding an overview of SB 1383's organic waste reduction requirements by Mike Baughier, MBC Consulting. Hi, Mike.
Hi, everybody. Sorry, I was on mute there. Didn't realize it. It's good to appear before the council again. I think 2017 was the last time I appeared before you. That was shortly after we had renegotiated your organics program rate with Republic Services and got rolling. The state has been quite busy, as have we. We're at a 90% compliance rate, but unfortunately, in 2022, the ground rules and the whole scope of who is under the mandate is going to change. And so with that, I will get into. Sorry, had a little glitch there with my share screen. Let me get back here. There's my share screen. Sorry about that. All righty. Still have my whiteboard there. Can everybody see the slide now?
No.
All right. Just downloaded a new version of Windows, so go to Share Screen again. Share that PowerPoint.
Got it.
Play from start. How are we now?
You can see it, Mike.
Perfect. All right, great. So SB 1383 was a bill that was actually passed in 2016. The SB 1383 that everybody's talking about now are the regulations related to that, and they represent the most significant waste reduction mandate in the last 30 years, actually since AB 939. What SB 1383 does is it establishes a statewide target. So it's a little different than AB 939 that established requirements for jurisdictions. Since it's a statewide goal, these regulations are much more prescriptive. Everybody needs to do the same thing. And what that means to the City of Los Alamos is new and additional monitoring, enforcement, outreach, and reporting requirements. State dictates on procurement. You need stronger contractual obligations in your agreement to have 15-year capacity for your organics, help from your haulers on a lot of these unfunded mandates. And unfortunately, it will mean higher rates. As far as organics, which is the target, basically, two-thirds of the waste stream is some type of organic, whether it be paper, wood, lumber, or other organic material. But the big focus of SB 1383 is food waste. It's the largest single component in the landfills. And with the 75% reduction requirement in SB 1383, we're talking 20 million tons of material the state will no longer allow to go into the landfill. Climate change is a polarizing issue, but it is the driver of this legislation. In 2006, the state passed AB 32, which was the Global Warming Solutions Act. That same year, they passed SB 32, which said, "We have to reduce the climate pollutants to 40% of 1990 levels." And solid waste was tied to that. Landfills are, you know, supposedly 21% of the methane gas in the state comes from landfills. So AB 341 was the first bit of mandates to come through that required businesses to have a recycling program. In 2012, that passed. 2016 was AB 1826, which I mentioned, which was mandatory organic waste recycling programs. Started with the largest generators. Now it covers anybody who generates two cubic yards or more of waste per week. SB 1383, the requirements are very aggressive. If you look at that 2020 target of 50% reduction, we did not meet that as a state. That is why in September of this year, every business that generates two cubic yards or more of organics, or solid waste, actually, per week fell under the mandate. Prior to that, it was four cubic yards or more. So basically, that added 257 businesses and multifamily properties in Los Alamos to the compliance roles. The, the commercial organics recycling law, again, will get more strict as time goes along. 75% in 2025 is the goal. And in addition, this legislation tax or targets edible food waste. While the state doesn't know exactly how much of the discarded food is edible, they're wanting to see a 20% increase in the amount of food recovery. It's a worthwhile goal. One in five Californians goes to bed hungry, so we all need to do our part, and these regulations actually mandate that we do. On the screen before you are the key dates. If you look in 2019, where it says late 2019, early 2020, regulations adopted, unfortunately, the regulations didn't get adopted until November, and that's the Office of, I think, Legislative Analysis approved them for the governor's signature in November. Even though the state was a bit late with meeting its timeline, there is nothing in place at this point to delay the timeline for the jurisdictions. January 1 of 2022 is when you need to have all of your programs in place. Sometime between then and 2024 is when you could actually be fined for not meeting those requirements. And in January of 2024, the state is actually requiring the city to fine any of your businesses or residents that do not have mandated programs. So again, it's a very prescriptive law. So the key date, again, I mentioned 2022, that's when you need to have organics collection, not just for businesses, but for residents. That starts January 1. Residents, multifamily properties that right now only have to recycle their green waste have to be recycling their food waste to be compliant with this law. The state, or the city has to establish an edible food recovery program. One of the things the cities that I'm working with, I'm encouraging to do, is to lobby the county. They use grant funding to have a wonderful program with an outfit called Waste Not OC that basically handled that edible food program. Again, you have to track who's donating. The state requires your Tier 1 and Tier 2 generators. And then Los Alamos, that's about 13 businesses and institutions that have to have an edible food recovery program, and the law requires you to track it, quantify how much is being donated, so they can determine if we've increased by 20%. You already are doing a bunch of education now. There's even more that's added in these regulations. Basically, everyone that's impacted by this regulation, the city is responsible for educating and informing. Procurement, I mentioned, based on your population, you're going to have to buy a certain amount of organics-derived products to help drive the market that the state is hoping grows to handle these 20 million tons of organic materials that can no longer go to the landfill. Late in 2021, you're going to get your procurement goal. The state just released its calculation figures, and you'll have to purchase the equivalent of 973 tons of mulch, basically. But again, through your agreement with your hauler, the renewable natural gas that they purchase to run their fleet of vehicles, the city can get credit for that and avoid the cost of having to buy quite a bit of material. Capacity planning is another thing through your contract with your hauler that you should take care of. They can provide you that 15-year guarantee that satisfies the state requirement. Again, in 2024 is when the state is requiring you to take action and actually levy fines. They have model ordinances of which you need to review and pass this year so that you have that capacity in your municipal code. So your responsibilities, this is kind of a summary of them here. You have to provide the programs to residents and businesses, establish your food recovery program, conduct the required education and outreach, buy the materials to help fund the markets, and then secure access to your recycling and edible food recovery. The recycling is a challenge. The state estimates we're about 100 facilities shy of what's needed to process all of this organic material. Some of you may be aware of AB 1594 that took effect in January of this year. Prior to that time, cities were able to get recycling or diversion credit for green waste that was ground up and used as alternative daily cover at the landfill to replace having to import dirt. That no longer counts as diversion, and that material is actually material that can no longer legally go to the landfill. So that was quite a bit. It was also material that, here in Orange County, could be dumped at the landfill for free. Now that has to go to a composting facility, which will not be free. And lastly, there is a whole myriad of monitoring, reporting, and enforcement requirements that SB 1383 puts on the city. As many as possible, you want to incorporate into your hauling agreement, but that is going to be an additional challenge for the city in 2022. So the new franchise agreement I mentioned, the RFP and the model agreement, which City Attorney Dot has some materials on that we've gone over, needs to provide all the mandated services. And one of the nice things that the state has done is they've developed, actually, a model agreement that includes all of the minutia that the city has to handle in agreement format. So it makes it fairly easy to incorporate all these requirements and not miss a thing. So that was a good thing they did. Again, I'm working on a few agreements with cities, 200 pagers that we're trying to cut down to 170, so that gives you an idea of the breadth and scope of what they're trying to do. But again, in that agreement, you want to try to get the haulers to help you with that edible food recovery program, targeting those Tier 1s and Tier 2s, helping with the reporting. Of course, your hauler needs to be a very big partner in education. You really want to try to get that renewable natural gas credit because that lowers the out-of-pocket dollars the city has to come up with to meet state procurement requirements for you. Again, getting that facility capacity, that would be one of your agreement requirements, that the hauler provides you that 15-year capacity for your materials, and make the haulers as much as possible an active participant in the monitoring and reporting of all your programs. So to look at where we've been and where we're going is basically the last two slides, and sorry, I'm going on and on. It's just a lot to cover. In 2016, January was when the city was required under AB 1826 to have a program in place. As Michael Dot may remember, we had challenges with the pricing of that program. It was $217,000 to do a pilot with 13 businesses, which, again, that's when I started working with the city. We were able to avoid the 14% universal rate increase that was requested. We've worked with Republic Services to cut those costs down to $129,000 and set up subscription service. So basically, people that were receiving the program were the ones who had to pay for it rather than spreading it across people who were not receiving the service. Since that time, we've been very aggressive, and Republic has been a very good partner. 10 of your 13 Tier 1 and Tier 2s were brought into compliance. This satisfied the state that had basically said, "Hey, you've got to have a program." Once we got the rates correct, we went out. And actually, today, as of right now, you're 90% compliant. Again, the challenges in 2022 were adding residents and multifamily food program requirements. Also, the threshold that's allowed us to provide some businesses with exemption will drop from a half cubic yard of organic waste per week. Anybody under that, it'll drop all the way down to 20 gallons per week. Anybody that has 20 gallons or more of organic waste, unfortunately, is under the mandate. So again, the timeline that we're suggesting, and we've been working with staff on, is to finalize that RFP document that basically instructs the haulers all the different ins and outs of the city, all the programs that the city wants their help with, so that you can get as competitive and as comprehensive a bid as possible. The model agreement is something that I always suggest cities send out to haulers and make exceptions to those agreements, a material part of your review process. A hauler that won't do certain things isn't as valuable as a hauler that will help you with everything. And so if they know that, they're more inclined to agree with all the terms. And again, there are a lot of new ones, given these new regulations. With that in mind, and, you know, the goal that we had set was a March 15 date for the RFP to go out to all the haulers, and then a July 15 due date for their bids to come back in for the city to review. That would allow you to make your selection and start that transition and education process. Most of your residents aren't aware that food waste needs to be recycled in 2022. Multifamily properties is going to be very challenging. Now, thank goodness, the state does allow some space-based exemptions, but you need to get on that process and actually utilize some forms. Again, the regulations have an at-any-time inspection process where the state can come in and make sure you have records to back up your exemptions, for example. So again, there's a lot to do with the remainder of 2021, so that January 1 of 2022, you have a new hauler in place, you have an agreement that makes them your needed partner in SB 1383 compliance. All of your residents and businesses are aware of their responsibilities, and you're ready to go. And with that, I will try to extricate myself from that and get back to the not sharing my screen. Am I back?
You're back. Thank you, Mike. It's very helpful. Obviously, these are very burdensome regulations.
They are.
By this, we appreciate your help. Does anyone have any questions for Mike?
Hey, Mark, I do real quick. Michael, when we did this back in 2016, I just want to confirm that this is still the case, that the military base and the school district, including the four schools in Los Alamos, are not under our jurisdiction.
You cannot make them have a program, but the state requires that you monitor what they do. So they are in a weird no-man's land. The state ultimately is the one who's supposed to be responsible for making them have a program. How that fining situation is going to play out, I couldn't see in my review of the regulations. I know Michael's looked at them a bit. He may have some insight in that. But, you know, safe to say, your one requirement is to monitor them and inform them of their requirements, whether you will actually be able to find the facility or if the state will. Talking about the base now remains to be seen.
Yeah, I know with the school district, it's a completely different trash hauler site. It will be hard to see how we would even get that data, especially.
They actually have a program there. One of your compliant people, the base actually started their program in 2020. Now, we had COVID hit, so it hasn't expanded as we'd like. But, you know, basically, they aren't the challenge right now, but they will have to adopt food waste donation. And again, that's where ultimately the state is the, is, should be the enforcement entity because, again, they are exempt from your franchising rights. Your program is provided through your franchise. So frankly, there's no way for you to make them comply, but you do need to track and report them, and we haven't been able to do that.
Okay, I just want to make sure that moving forward, that everybody involved at the state level understands that they're in our state limits, but they're not under our jurisdiction, and we don't get nailed for non-compliance for them.
Yeah, ultimately, the state law does say that the state is responsible for compliance for state entities. So whether, again, the enforcement piece would likely come through them, the notification of non-compliance and the education typically has come from the jurisdiction, the local jurisdiction. So like I said, there's a weird overlap there. You have to monitor them, but you really can't make them do anything.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Mark, I have just two quick questions or this.
Mark, I have just two quick questions, or this conversation could go on all night. But it sounds to me, Michael, this is another one of the great state programs. It's a good idea. It's needed. But clearly, it appears to be another unfunded mandate where cities are being told to do all these great things without adequate funding from the state. So my next question, and really my major question here, is what are cities doing? And what should we be doing in terms of working with the League of California Cities to ask the state to either fund some of these regulations that they're throwing at us and talking about penalties to our residents in terms of providing funding? Or going after certain of these regulations and saying, hey, state, we love you, well-intended. We don't have the resources to enforce this. It's too expensive to our residents for you to force this unfunded mandate on us. A loaded question. I realize that.
Well, it is, and it's one that actually has been going on since AB 939. The state's response has been, well, the regulations allow you to pass this cost on to your residents. There's never been an accounting of what is an untenable level to pass on. And again, SB 1383 is going to push it. Look at your current residential trash rate. I believe it's 1450. It's one of the lowest in the county. The lowest rates I'm seeing for fully compliant programs that have food waste in them are probably going to be in the $22 to $23 per household rate. That's a 55% increase. For commercial businesses, you have two challenges. Number one, you currently have mixed waste processing, which means the recyclables in the trash are picked up together. They're taken to a facility and sorted. Because of China's green sword and, you know, basically gutting the mixed plastic and the mixed paper markets, those types of programs really aren't sustainable. Number two, the state in SB 1383 regulations has established that a facility has to divert 75% of the organic wastes it receives to get a high diversion rate facility designation to allow it to do mixed waste processing. So mixed waste processing is virtually going to go away as a viable option. So now your businesses can't put everything in just the trash container. They're going to have to get another container for recycling and another container for organics. And the combination of those three together will probably be another 50% increase. I know that there was a lot of lobbying from the county, the League of Cities. That's probably my guess why these regulations have taken so long to pass. But they never materially changed really from the start of when they were introduced. I think the county had some valid questions on, well, why doesn't our methane recovery system at the landfill reduce the need to have to recover these materials? And, you know, to date, it's been a really a losing battle for the city. And I think it's that climate change tie-in and the fact that, you know, the state sees it as a necessary thing in the short term. So.
Mr. Mayor, my last question, and then I'll keep quiet here. Last question is, what, if anything, because this is always the big issue, is the state doing to develop a market? They want us to do all this thing, and, you know, basically, there's no market for recyclables anymore. What are they doing for a market for organics, if anything?
Well, they've done a series of grants. And for example, CHRNR has a very large facility in Paris, California, an anaerobic digester. And it was, you know, tens of millions of dollars that that facility cost, probably 30 or more. I think they got five or 10 million from the state. The state has been funding multiple locations. But again, it's such an ambitious target, 20 million tons. There's just not enough money on those facilities right now.
It's a joke. Okay, we're good. Thank you.
All right.
I just, you know, you said residents will be responsible for organic waste recycling starting in 2022. What does that look like? I mean, is that, the people who are in single-family residences, are they going to now have a fourth trash can?
Some are talking about small containers, very costly. Some are mixing food waste with green waste. One of my client cities is Costa Mesa, and they have been mixing food waste and green waste in their green cart for a couple of years. That's an option.
And then we're going to have to work with the county health department, that we're going to have the war with the county health department, Mark, coming, believe me.
Yeah, yeah, it's, again, it's a challenge, especially in multifamily properties. Because again, especially in older communities, the enclosures were built before there were any regulations on providing space for a recycling container. Now you're going to add a separate organics container. And again, there are exemptions for space constraints, which I think, you know, need to be explored to the extent possible. But it's a logistical challenge. And your new hauler or your existing hauler, if they're selected, needs to be an active partner and actually needs to help defray as many costs as possible.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, I don't think we have any more questions, Mike, so thanks again. We appreciate it, and I'm sure we'll be hearing from you again soon.
All right. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll go on to oral communications. City Clerk Quintanar, do we have anybody wishing to speak tonight?
We did not. As listed on the agenda, people can request by email. We did not receive any requests to speak for tonight's meeting.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on then to council announcements. And I will pick on the newest of us, Jordan. You can go first with your announcements. Thank you.
I have nothing to report at this time.
Okay. Ron?
Just one quick one. I attended a Zoom meeting for the Orange County Division of the League of California Cities. They talked about some of the initiatives under the new Biden administration. I think it'll be very helpful, and I'm looking forward to tomorrow.
Thank you, Ron. Tanya?
Hi. Because I've spent so much time with y'all in December. Looks like since the last time we met, I went to two HR Human Relations Commission meetings. And they actually were getting some more information on a program that they're trying to do for rescuing, no, I'm sorry. They don't deal in rescuing. They're looking to stop and preempt sex trafficking and violence towards women and children. And I found that very fascinating because they were giving some of the facts and specifics of how it happens in Orange County, and it happens at our high schools, and it happens at our middle schools. And you don't find out about it until after so much time has gone by. And it just really, it blew my mind. So when I get the totality of the information, I'll share it with y'all. I see our standing chief nodding his head because I'm sure that he could elaborate if given time. But it really is something I'm going to put on our radar when I get some more information.
If you, Tanya. Shelley?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Just with OCFA, I mean, just a huge shout out to the stuff that they've been doing that's been, you know, affecting our city and then our county. As Chet had mentioned, the county reached out to OCFA a couple of weeks ago, admitting that they really had no plan for distributing the vaccines. And can they help? And OCFA was able to turn it around in two days. And get, because that's what they do. They set up emergency headquarters without notice. So this is right in their wheelhouse. The other thing that happened this couple of weekends ago was OCFA had a very strong, strong presence at Los Alamos Medical Center, setting up the temporary hospital and the parking structure. That was led by Ron Roberts. I was getting all kinds of calls that, man, these firefighters are dressed second to none. So thank you to Ron for taking the initiative and that lead on that. And OCFA has been well, well-represented in the best that they can to help with this effort.
Awesome. Thank you, Shelley. Since our last meeting, I attended the Orange County Sanitation District monthly meeting, and I'm getting incorporated into that organization and looking forward to new member orientation next month. This is going to, you're going to hear a lot about the sanitation district coming up. There's a huge project plan. I know we had a speaker speak on this last month. But I'm going to keep reminding residents and bringing forth more information about the Los Alamos Trunk Sewer Project, which will make improvements to sewer lines on Los Alamos Boulevard and also on Catella between Oak and Lexington. It'll be a huge effort. It'll cause a lot of disruption. The city and the sanitation district will be putting out more information once we have it. Once we do this, hopefully, we won't have to do sewer work on those streets for another 50 or 100 years, ideally. I attended weekly mayor's calls, two of them, where the Orange County mayors discuss issues of relevance to the entire county. As you can imagine, much of the discussion was regarding COVID-19 and the vaccine. In connection with that, I participated along with Chet, City Manager Simmons, in the last two weekly mayor's calls with the Orange County Health Officer, Dr. Chow, and County CEO Frank Kim. Much of the discussion was about, the entire discussion, I should say, was centered on COVID-19 and the county's challenge regarding the vaccination process, the short summary, and, you know, most everybody knows this already, if you've been following the news at all. But the short summary is that the county's geared up the Athena website and pods and super pods. They're now vaccinating individuals 65 and older, in addition to healthcare workers and others who qualify. The Athena app, it has improved significantly, but it's still, there's still a lot of issues there. As of last Friday, I think the county CEO said the app had received 100 million visits. I'm told that the website works better than the app, but you have to be persistent, trying again and again. You know, we're hoping that they'll make changes to the app. And really, more importantly, that the supply of vaccinations will increase. I mean, according to the county, the primary issue that they're facing, and as a result, there's issues on the onsite and with the app, with the program, is that they just have, they don't have enough vaccines. They're getting volunteers. They could always use more. If you're interested in signing up, sign up at oneoc.org to volunteer. In addition to volunteers, Los Alamos is looking at additional ways we can support this huge effort, maybe even, you know, assisting with a local point of distribution, vaccination spot here in Los Alamos. You know, perhaps having city staff help out at a local pod. The county's provided hundreds of employees so far, but they do need more volunteers. One of the interesting things they talked about on the call was that the SoCal ICU capacity is projected, four weeks out, it's still going to be less than 15%. Meaning, you know, as a region, the SoCal region, we would continue to be on this lockdown. We all want to get out of this lockdown. And the way to do that is to have our hospital beds get reduced. And the quicker that happens, the quicker vaccination efforts can be supported even more by healthcare facilities. The hope is, you know, our residents and residents of Orange County follow the healthcare, health official recommendations, staying home, wearing a mask, distancing, pushing out the vaccine as quickly as possible. And ideally, you know, we'll get the hospital beds down as quickly as possible. And it's sort of a snowball. We'll have less people sick and dying, which is the main goal. But also, we can also then get back to fully reopening and back to normality. At least, that's the hope. So right now, the information we have as a city and the facts regarding vaccination are changing frequently. So you'll want to continue checking the city and county website and, you know, listen for further updates. Hopefully, things will improve on the vaccination front. I think they will, but it's just taking time and, you know, it's a difficult process. Unfortunately, the county, you know, they're doing everything that they can, I believe, along with the help from OCFA and others, to try to push out the vaccine. But again, the biggest constraint is the lack of supply on the vaccination. Chen, I don't know if you had anything to add to that on the COVID front or any other?
Thank you, Mayor. Just add that, again, we will be continuously updating the information on our website and pushing things out through our social media. So please continue to avail yourself of that and as well as following the simple rules that everyone can follow, wearing a face mask and keeping social distance.
Very good. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to the items from the city manager. Back to you, Chen.
Just one item, sir. Staff would like to pull item D, the adoption of the legislative platform for 2021. Given everything that is going on in Washington at the state level, and it will give us an opportunity to provide some additional information within the report, and then also tighten up some of the recommendations that are within. And we will request that we can bring that back to you at a later meeting.
Okay. Thank you. With that, we'll move to the warrants. Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
One second.
Mayor, I have just two questions, and I apologize to Craig that I wasn't able to get back to him this afternoon. So I'll save some other thoughts until later. But if you'll go to page four on the warrant register, that county charge on page four, Craig, can you help us with that? What the, where that is coming from? And what is in relation to, I think it says like Orange County tax on it?
Right. Council Bates, that's County Orange Treasurer tax. There's actually three invoices in connection with that. The toll that was a payment to County Orange totaling $18,872.30. First one was for the city share with NPDES Water Quality Ordinance for Agreement Number 02-048. And that was for $17,839.97. Came through Development Service Department. The other two were police-related. One was for OC Automated Fingerprint ID System invoicing. That was for $515. And then the third one was, again, police-related, was for OCATS, for the number 20 invoice billing. That was for $1,0273.33. And all those items are currently budgeted.
If you'll turn to page nine then, Craig, under Palace Consulting, Inc. Was that for some type of a traffic report there, where it says under street report?
No, that's actually Fails Consulting Incorporated. I implemented that in 2020 and outsourced the preparation for both the state controllers' annual street report. This was, particular charge was for $100. And losing the position of the special projects coordinator in finance, that was, these duties were formerly under the responsibility of that individual. When that individual left, and then the position was ultimately frozen for the new budget, I had to divvy up the duties and it made more sense to outsource this type of reporting that would cost probably three or four times as much if it was done by internal staffing.
That's all, Mr. Mayor, from me. Thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second, I believe? Okay. Will you take a roll call?
Roll call. Mayor Turco?
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tim Hasselbrake?
Aye.
Councilmember Bates?
Aye.
Councilmember Dobie?
Aye.
Councilmember Nafolda?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to the consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be acted upon by one motion unless a council member requests separate action on a specific item. The city manager has already pulled Item D off of the consent calendar. Does anyone wish to discuss any of the items on the consent calendar?
I'd like to pull Item G, just for a brief discussion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I'll move the rest.
I will second the rest.
We have a motion and a second for the remaining consent calendar items. Mayor Turco?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hasselbrink?
Aye.
Councilmember Bates?
Aye.
Councilmember Dobie?
Aye.
Councilmember Nafolda?
Aye.
Okay, Ron, on Item G, Los Alamos Measure Y Fiscal Accountability Pledge.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I may, obviously, myself and Councilmember Nafolda have not had a chance to, to take action on this. The other three of you have, and certainly speaking for myself, I want to be supportive. I would like to be supportive with the understanding, and I think this is in the process of happening, that at least one or two of the council members meet with the city manager so that we can program out some of the first steps that we can take based on the revenue that will be produced from Measure Y, to show that we're really paying attention to the public who passed this, trusting us with some new money, and showing them, hey, here's some of the first steps we think we can take to invest the new money as it starts to come in, starting in May of this year. So that would be my suggestion, is that, yes, we should go ahead and take action tonight to approve this, but with the thought that you and the city manager would put together a committee to just focus on some of the new projects that we might be able to work on as a result of this additional money.
Thank you, Ron. It's a great suggestion, and I know Chet and I have discussed going forward, you know, in that manner, and projects to show the residents and to back up what the residents supported, which is, you know, making these investments and ensuring quality of life and public safety and all of that. It's also something we'll be talking about on the Budget Standing Committee, you know, how to properly allocate those funds and that money to support what our, you know, what our residents told us through the Measure Y process. But, no doubt, Ron, and of course, you know, we'd love to have you involved in those discussions as well, and with the city manager, too.
With that, go ahead.
I'm sorry, just to add on to that, Ron, I want to take it even a step further, and I'm talking to Chet and also the mayor about it, is as we do allocate the money and spend the money, it's just as important for the messaging, so when residents and businesses see a project, they know that it's from Measure Y funds. That just reinforces that that money's being well-spent in the public eye, as opposed to stuff that they really can't see, and it might be important, but this is their tax dollars that they want reinvested back into the community to make their community better. So I'm in full agreement, and I think messaging is key here.
Right on. Thank you. With that, Mr. Mayor, unless there are other comments, I'll move to recommended action.
Thank you. I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Do roll call. Mayor Turco?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hasselbrink?
Aye.
Councilmember Bates?
Aye.
Councilmember Dobie?
Aye.
Councilmember Nafolda?
Aye.
Thank you, and I believe that's it for tonight's meeting. We are adjourned at 7:13 PM.
Not the shortest meeting, Mayor, but you're getting close.
I tried.
We did start late.
Ron kept asking questions, though. You can blame Ron for that one, actually.
Yeah, Ron, I owe you pizza.
Uh-oh.
See you later, guys.
Thank you, everybody. Good night.
Sure.